Now 5:00 PM, we will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umbly Independent School District to order. Pursuant to Governor Abbott's temporary suspension of open meetings laws issued on March 16th, 2020, this meeting will be conducted by video and audio conference call. No board members or members of the public will be physically present. Members of the public may access the meeting by going to the link on the front of the Umbly ISD website. Moving to our first item of business is closed session. A closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. A closed session of the board will now be held. The time is 5:01 PM. So moving, we will go, we will leave this meeting and we will go to closed meeting.
All right. How do I do that, Karen?
Okay, do I have everybody?
Looks like we're waiting on Brent.
Brent, okay. Karen, do we have him yet?
No, I'm gonna text him.
Yep.
Okay, we got everybody? Okay. The time now is 5:49 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the board are open to the public but are not a public meeting of the public. The Umbly ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The board does receive the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item. But as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respective behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and our comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item, we will now honor our flags and I will say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. And now, if we would please take just a few moments for a moment of silence.
Nancy, this is Karen. Sorry, noticed that Mr. Scarfo is not joined back yet.
Okay, well, we'll wait. We'll wait then. Glad to have you, Robert. Okay, we're now moving to commendations and recognitions, moving to our next agenda item tonight. Commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely, thank you. For tonight's inspiring moments, Umbly ISD teachers are the best in the profession. Each year, two are chosen to represent our district in the Region Four Teacher of the Year program. Our new Secondary Teacher of the Year is Lindsay Thrower. Ms. Thrower teaches sixth grade social studies at Umbly Middle School. I want to thank Gulf Coast educators, Federal Credit Union for providing a $2,500 prize for this award. Our Elementary Teacher of the Year is Darcy Petzel. Ms. Petzel teaches second grade at Eagle Springs Elementary School, also was chosen as the District Teacher of the Year. She received a $5,000 prize generously donated by Robin Chevrolet and Nissan as the District Teacher of the Year. Let's enjoy tonight's Inspiring Moments video.
You're our Secondary Teacher of the Year!
I feel like I'm only as good as the teachers that are around me. So I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for everyone there.
Lindsay Thrower is the teacher every middle schooler wants to have. She's exciting, fun, you never know what you're gonna get when you walk into her classroom. I mean, she's just a dream.
I believe that as a teacher, our job is to help create memories. Once you create those memories for students, that's when the learning sticks.
She's a risk taker. She takes that curriculum and she tries to find a way to make it relevant for students. So whether it's building tents in her classroom, or transforming the hallway, or just trying to create a type of game to get kids engaged, she wants world cultures to really be meaningful to the students that she teaches.
I'm able to, you know, help my kids see the world. We go everywhere. We have went on yoga retreats. We have visited European cafes. We have experienced the plague. And so for me to be here at Umbly Middle School has really given me the chance to flourish, because I see my students flourish. And so when they come back to me and say, "Ms..." My favorite lesson was when we did the Amazon rainforest, because I didn't think that I was going to survive. And, you know, my friend, he or she, they didn't survive, but I survived. Like, I was able to, you know, conquer the Amazon rainforest.
When I saw Dr. Fagan walking up my sidewalk, I was like, "Oh, this is big, this is really big." And then I started thinking, "Oh, my gosh, I'm not dressed for, you know, company."
You're the Umbly ISD Teacher of the Year winner!
I wasn't surprised, I was shocked. I mean, I know this is a fabulous school district, and I'm really honored to represent Eagle Springs, but I know the whole district is full of incredible teachers, you know?
This year is a little bit different, surprising the teacher at her house, but there's something more intimate and special about it, too.
One thing I really love about Darcy is she will just take the curiosity and the wonder of little kids and just magnify it 100%.
I really don't even think of myself as a teacher anymore. I see myself as a facilitator. And so I like to offer students opportunities, learning opportunities. I really believe that students, if they're given voice and choice and ownership of their learning, they're so much more energized.
What you want as a leader is to have an amazing professional like her that comes to you with ideas and you're able to say, "Yes, go, run with that idea." And that's what she does.
My very first grant here was called, I don't even remember the title, but it was for Love and Logic, which is a way of managing behavior with students solving their own problems. The second grant, I think, was the Bird's Eye View Grant, which for me is the one closest to my heart, because my parents were birders. And when my father passed away, my mother gave me his binoculars. And so they instilled in me the love of nature and birding. And so I really wanted to share that with the students. I remember one of the first times we were out walking around, the kids had their binoculars on and they're marching around and we're getting ready to find a spot to do birding. And the one kid looked up at me and he said, "I'm a birder now." And it was just such a cool moment for me, because I was able to share what my parents had given me and share it with the students. That tied into gardening. And I was able to get a grant to do some gardening. So that club evolved into Roots and Wings. We had the Creativity Fills the Sound Waves, and that was for an outdoor musical instrument, which then led to the next grant, I think it was called Zoom In. And that was the name of the after-school club, and it was for photography. And then the last grant is the Food for Thought Grant, which is to do cooking in the classrooms. We have a cart that can be transported into the classrooms or into the collabatory. And students can learn math, science, reading from taking a recipe and making a product, making mistakes, and learning from their mistakes.
Here are tomatoes. You can pick them right off the vine. They don't have any pesticides on them, you can eat them.
Wow, we have the most incredible teachers. And last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And, you know, I can't begin to tell you how proud I am of not just these two educators who are really, you know, best-in-class, incredible teachers who go so above and beyond, make learning engaging and fun and interesting, and their kids learn so much more than we ever thought possible. But all Umbly ISD teachers are really incredible. The next part is fine arts education. It's an important component of what we provide in Umbly ISD. Tonight, I am proud to highlight the award-winning work of students from the Rodeo Art Show. Stacy Gower, Visual Arts Coordinator, is going to tell us more.
Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our top award winners from our 2020 Umbly ISD Livestock and Rodeo Art Show. This year, our show included over 700 entries in painting, drawing, ceramics, fibers, and mixed media. Artwork was assessed by a panel of six experienced art educators, and judges considered originality, creativity, craftsmanship, and Western content. We had 22 students take top awards this year, and they are Caitlin Lyles, 2D Best of Show, Bear Branch Elementary; Amber Tucker, 3D Best of Show, Shadow Forest Elementary; Lauren Loth, 2D Best of Show, Atascoceta Middle School; Giselle Gallegos, 3D Best of Show, Timberwood Middle School; Dana Kim, 2D Best of Show, Atascoceta High School; Bailey Barger, 3D Best of Show, Kingwood High School; Michaela Miller, 2D Gold Medal, Shadow Forest Elementary; Jaylee Green, Gold Medal, 3D Fall Creek Elementary; Brett Johnson, Gold Medal, 2D Riverwood Middle School; Olivia Yancey, Gold Medal, 3D Atascoceta Middle School; Willa Wise, Gold Medal, 2D Kingwood Park High School; Brooke Williams, Gold Medal, 2D Atascoceta High School; Justin Billy, Gold Medal, 2D Kingwood High School; Jennifer Reiken, Gold Medal, 3D Atascoceta High School; Michael McCarthy, Special Merit, 2D Willow Creek Elementary; Katerina Maya, Special Merit, 2D Fall Creek Elementary; Katerina Delgado, Special Merit, 3D Summerwood Elementary; Adley Ashby, Special Merit, 2D Kingwood Middle School; Ilian Lubovner, Special Merit, 2D Creekwood Middle School; Raya Sutterman, Special Merit, 3D Creekwood Middle School; Grace Blessing, Special Merit, 2D Kingwood Park High School; Elise Palacios, Special Merit, 3D Atascoceta High School. Congratulations to these students and their teachers for a job well done. Your artwork was amazing, and we appreciate your courage and the creativity that you put forth all the time.
So first, we highlight incredible teachers and then incredible student artists. So Umbly ISD is proud tonight of the work that our staff does and what our students are able to produce. And I think that's it for tonight.
Okay. Our next item is public comment. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. I understand tonight we do not have any to speak, so I'm going to forego reading the long policy on that, so if y'all don't mind. Then we move on to comments by individual board members. So I'm gonna start with, I've gotta see if I can get everybody here. Ms. Toomey, why don't I start with you?
It would be best if I unmuted myself.
Fine.
So I just wanna start off by, again, congratulating Lindsay Thrower and Darcy Petzel. And congratulations for winning the Teachers of the Year and then the District Teacher of the Year. I really felt like the video was kind of a throwback to the Publishers Clearinghouse Sweepstakes videos, and it was awesome. I had it, so I enjoyed watching that. Also, I am absolutely floored by how wonderful of artists we have in our district. I mean, looking through those, that presentation about our rodeo art show winners, there was some amazing work in there. So just congratulations to those students and just very proud of them. I also want to welcome Brent back to his service, his first board meeting, my first time to get to serve with Brent. And just congratulations, I think. But, you know, so hopefully this next year will be a wonderful year with you on the board.
Thank you.
And then just, lastly, and this is, I'm really not very good at this stuff, I just wanted to send out condolences to the family of Dr. Scanzo. He will most certainly be missed. Again, I'm not eloquent in this area, I'm sure that Robert Sutton will have some beautiful words to say. But he was a wonderful guy. He meant a lot to this district. He had a huge impact on this district, both before his retiring and then even after his retirement and staying in education. And I just wanted to say, you know, again, condolences to his family, and he will be missed. Thank you.
I had to unmute, I apologize. Ms. Dixon?
Yes, first, welcome, Mr. Engalagi. I have filled your past position now for almost three years, and I am really looking forward to working with you for this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. To the Teachers of the Year, Ms. Petzel and Ms. Thrower, congratulations. And I love how we were able to go out to their homes. I think it actually is a lot more personal and really wonderful. So it was so wonderful to see, and congratulations to you both. Congratulations to the extremely talented rodeo art winners. I agree with Ms. Toomey, we truly have exceptional talent in our district, and it's so wonderful to see. And my, obviously, wow, my sincere condolences to Dr. Scanzo's entire family. Definitely will be greatly missed in our entire community and within the district. And last, I want to actually just take a moment, I know we've done this before, but several board members have done this as well, but again, to thank Dr. Fagan, the entire staff, all of the teachers, the executive team, everyone, just really, number one, for putting the safety and well-being of our students above all else, and really focusing on what's most important during this time that we find ourselves in. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Let me make sure I unmute. Again, just wanna recognize the Teachers of the Year. It was good seeing those really talented and fabulous teachers being recognized, in-classroom teachers that teach subjects as well this year. We've got amazing teachers, and they represent the best of what we have. So I wanna recognize them. The artists always love this meeting every year. Kind of miss not having those talented kids in the boardroom with us, and we can see their art in person. But, you know, every year, it's just amazing to see what our kids can do and how talented they are. Again, Brent, welcome back, buddy. Brent and I have served on the board together for a long time. It's good to have him back. For the time that he and I are gonna be on the board together for about another year now. And last, but certainly not least, Dr. Scanzo. I worked with Dr. Scanzo for over 10 years on the board. I tell people all the time, I was, you know, very familiar with the district. Basically, I moved out here when Dr. Scanzo was effectively hired. And so I tell people this all the time, the, when he was hired, he was the right guy in the right place at the right time. We needed Dr. Scanzo and his talents for what the school district was going through when he was hired. And he led us through a lot of bumpy times, he led us through the explosive growth, and kept our community and our school district together. And he's gonna be dearly, dearly missed. He was a, just a wonderfully nice, nice man. It was, you know, working with him for 10 years was an experience and education for myself when it comes to the school district, school wall, and how everything works. And so, you know, my condolences, of course, go out to Diane and his kids and his grandkids. It's just tragic, tragedy. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'd like to, again, as we all, every meeting now, great big thanks to all, to Dr. Fagan, our leadership, and all the staff for what they're doing day in and day out. It's just, it's unbelievable, and very, very appreciated, appreciated. And I also would like to thank our, all the finalists, the Teachers of the Year, and the winners, Ms. Thrower and Ms. Petzel. And I've known Ms. Petzel for a long time, and I had the opportunity to be invited to see some of those innovative projects in person, and being a hand for the kids, it's always been great. And I agree with Tom, it's that watching that art was something else, if you wanna put bid in for some of those items, they just look really great. And I would really just like to take a few moments also to remember and celebrate our friend, Dr. Scanzo. Four decades in education, 15 years with the district, starting back in 2001, Superintendent of the Year in 2007, Regional Superintendent of the Year in 2013, all made again on the finalist. And then he was, he was at the helm, but we got the 2015 Best Art District, and that was, that was just awesome, great accomplishments. And even from the start, I first met him back in 2001, it was volunteering at Lake ville Elementary, because in Sperry, it was one of the campuses we adopted. And he was there from the start, which he, I learned over time, did very, all the time, well, he visited campuses, he made sure it's a part, various activities on those campuses, and became a big part of it. I also got to enjoy and share some special connections with Dr. Scanzo, our shared ancestral heritage, as you all know, and also our Brooklyn, New York connection. And I always loved to tell the story that he found out, later on, in conversation with my mom, of years after we had known each other, that for the first five years of our lives, we lived the same square block in Brooklyn, New York, a city of 300, 3 and 1/2 million people. He always thought that was pretty incredible. And so that was some special things that I got to share with him. But I think one of the biggest parts of his legacy, and I've heard it alluded to, is just that sense of family that we enjoy in the district today, you know, began with Guy's efforts going back to 2001, when we first joined. And, you know, it's not only with just the staff, but it's students, parents, the community at large. We really do have that family sense that we enjoy. And I've really been happy to see that Dr. Fagan and the board has continued over the last few years to continue to build on that, on that legacy and that community. But we see how important it is, it's just really, really a great thing, and we're always being competitive to really get that started. And last, I'll say, you know, I remember, and I think we all remember him, all the guys' skills as educators, but, and it's key, just as a person, his generosity, his passion, his integrity, it's just second to none. And I honestly consider, and I know a lot of people share this, it was a real opportunity, both to work with him and to know him on a personal level, it was a real privilege, and he really will be so, thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Engalagi, you need to unmute. Go down, look at your zoom picture to the left.
Bottom left.
How's that?
Perfect.
All right, good. Well, it's nice to be back. Thank you for your kind comments, everyone, and thank you for making time to visit with me over the last couple of weeks. I really appreciate your insights and getting me up to speed, so, so it's good to be back. It's kind of a funny, surreal feeling to look at this Brady Bunch group of faces on here. This is not the way I wanted to come back to a board meeting, but I guess we'll get back to some normalcy in the near future. But thank you so much for your kind comments. Karen, thank you for swearing me in over the front of my hood of my 2008 Honda Pilot. That was a very unusual swearing-in ceremony. And my buddy, Mr. Scarfo, was there to videotape it, so thank you, Robert, for being there for doing that. Heard a lot of great things over the last couple of weeks about what's going on in the district, and certainly one of the best is our wonderful superintendent, who I was happy to be there to hire. And I've intentionally not been too vocal or verbal in the last three years, but I have had a few text messages that I share with our superintendent, just mainly congratulatory, but I always end it with hashtag best vote ever. And, and I mean that, that was a, I don't know how many votes you take in nine years, but she was the best, and I really appreciate what you've done. And hearing a lot of super things from their board members that have gone on the last few years, so I look forward to working with you again. And certainly, finally, hardest, certainly heavy with a loss of a guy, and feel so bad for Diane and the kids. And just a real quick story, last night, we had a, had a somewhat prom in our backyard for my daughter and her many friends, and I didn't get much sleep last night, but it was a lot of fun. One of the dads said, "What was Guy Scanzo like?" And I said, "You know, I can sum it up with just one, one reflection," and that was, you know how when you look at your cell phone and you see who's calling and you go, "God, I don't wanna talk to that person." Guy Scanzo was not that person. He loved talking to Guy Scanzo, even when, like Nancy, you're president, and I'm sure you've had some hard conversations with Dr. Fagan about different issues. Even when I was president, and there was a lot of really hard conversations, I just loved talking to the guy. He was, he made a hard conversation an easy conversation, just the way he dealt with, you know, you as a person and the issue, it just, it was always a wonderful feeling. So I'll, I'll miss him a lot, pray for Diane and the kids. Thank you again for, everyone, for your warm welcome.
Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Madam President. So a couple of things, I wanna congratulate all of the Teachers of the Year finalists and the two, the Secondary and Elementary Teacher of the Year winners. And like, I think it was Mr. Lopez said, they are the cream of the crop, because our teachers in Umbly ISD are the best in the state of Texas. You know, we, we're known for innovation, we're known for excellence, and that starts in the classroom. And so I couldn't be more proud of all the teachers that we have in Umbly ISD. Also, the art students, I mean, some of the art Also, the art students, I mean, some of the artwork is just phenomenal. And the detail that they put into those, those projects is fantastic. Brent, I know it's not going to be a long time, but we're glad to have you back. We missed you. And we had a great time when you were with us before. And yes, you were part of that team that, that hired Dr. Fagan. So, we're glad to have you back so you can see the fruits of your labor and everything that she's been doing for the great folks here in Umbel ISD. Also, Dr. Fagan, you and your team, we talked about this last month. With all the adversity and challenges that, that you have had to endure in the few years you've been here, it's, it's amazing you're still here, first and foremost. But we're glad you are because of your leadership. The, the way your troops rally around you, the way that your staff and the teachers rally around you, and the way that you've navigated the challenges over the last several years. I'm, I'm like Brent, best vote ever took, you know. It was, it was a great decision to have you here. And I think what we've seen every single year, it's, whether it's been a hurricane, another flood, a virus, it's just been amazing to see you and how you've navigated that. Lastly, I want to talk briefly about Dr. Scanzo. But also, there was another, another loss, big loss to our community in the last month as well. It seems like there's been several, several deaths here, here of late, but I want to focus on two, if I can, briefly. Ray Calfee and the Calfee family, old Umbel. Long line of volunteers in the school district, teachers in the school district. Ray was a past city council member in the city of Umbel. And he passed away in the last month. And, you know, with the, with all the stay-at-home orders and all that, most of us weren't able to attend the funeral and wish we could have. So, I wanted to take just an opportunity here publicly to tell the Calfee family how much we appreciate what they've given back to this community and that our hearts and prayers go out to the family. And then lastly, Dr. Scanzo. Everyone's talked about what a great guy he was, how personable he was. The thing I keep hearing more and more about is he knew everyone's name. It didn't matter what building he was in, he knew, he knew kids by name, he knew teachers by name. He was, he was engaged, he was involved. And then he took that to the next level and, and his advocacy for public education on the state level. I know he worked with Representative Huberty for many, many years after he left the Umbel ISD board and was a true voice in Austin. And that's, again, that's something that Dr. Fagan has, has taken that torch and ran with that as well. So, we lost two, two huge figures in our community over the last month. And they will be, they will both be sorely missed. So, that's all I have, Madam President.
Well, I just want to ditto what everybody else has said about the great, the greatest teachers. Let's face it, we've got, we've got the best. And the kids' work obviously comes from great teachers, let's face it. And I agree with Mr. Scarfo, I'd love to have some of those pieces of artwork, I'm going to be honest with you. But I just want, and I just want to say a huge thank you to Dr. Fagan, Fagan and her staff. It is amazing what they get done. And you're right, Mr. Sutton. They have in, they have had insurmountable odds. I mean, they, they come through like champs. Heavy, heavy heart with Dr. Scanzo. I had the privilege of, needless to say, working under him. I watched him build that family atmosphere in Umbel. Also, you know, working with him at the state level with fast-growth schools, we had no better advocate for education. And my heart goes out to Diane and the kids and the grandkids because that is a huge, huge loss. So, I'm going to stop there. And our next item is Dr. Fagan, comments from the administration.
Thank you so much. First of all, welcome, Mr. Engalagi. This is, this is great to have you back. No matter when you text me, you always finish it with best vote ever. And how could I not love that, right? After all of your service to the district, I'm sure you had a lot of votes. So, I really have appreciated your support when I was hired and then your ongoing support afterwards. So, it's great to have you back. And it's, it's like Mr. Lopez, you guys think you're getting away, you don't get away. And it's really nice for the district to have that seamless transition. People who are invested and understand all the ins and outs of leadership at Umbel ISD, particularly when we're faced with some of these really catastrophic and unusual situations. To have a board that's as cohesive as this board is, is, is a real blessing to this entire school district and community. There, we're all spoiled, we really are. And having you both come back and provide that service and, and the rest who continue on and make sure that it is seamless and smooth sailing for the student, staff and community of Umbel ISD is, is just beyond, we can't appreciate you enough. The next thing is, you all, some of you all remember my quiet little entrance into the district almost four years ago. And yeah, it's a good thing they're muted. And I have to tell you that, that quiet little entrance was, was a little bit a challenge, to say the least. And I'll never forget that after the board meeting where I was introduced, the next morning, Dr. Scanzo invited me into what would be ultimately my conference room. And he was as confident as, as anyone about this is all going to be fine and you're going to be a great leader and we have great people and this community is going to be great. And he was, it was nothing but support. It was kindness, it was open-mindedness, it was support. And he didn't have to do that, you know, he, he didn't, he didn't have to be that person. He didn't have to put his name out there in support of me, and he did. And he has, you know, I thanked him, of course, but he'll never know what that meant to me. But I certainly want his family to know what that meant to me. It meant everything to me and to my girls and our transition into the district to have somebody who was the heart of Umbel ISD stand next to us, put his arm around us and say, there's no problem here, we're all going to be great. And that lent it so much credibility because people trusted him and they knew him and he knew them. And so that was a big part of, of the transition in and the beginning of, of a community that was open-minded and generous and warm, just as he was. And what Mr. Lopez said is absolutely my observation is that Dr. Scanzo came in at exactly the right time when the community needed it most and created a bridge and, and brought forward a district that had a huge heart for kids first and hired accordingly to that and took care of each other. And you know what they say, culture eats strategy for lunch. And so the culture is, is valuable, it's, it's golden and it's something that we love. And it's one of the reasons that people want to work here and it's one of the reasons people want their children here. And it's one of the reasons that we put it first, whether we're developing a budget, whether we're talking about any decision at all. My team is always reflecting on what impact will it have on the, the wonderful culture that we have here? Because we know that is critical and that you, you can't get that back easily. So, you have to always nurture it and care for it. It's a gift that was given to us and that we will absolutely continue on. That is, that is Dr. Scanzo. He was, he is and is, was, always will be part of the heart of Umbel ISD. And he was that to me personally, and I bet every person here has a story just like that one. So, I thought it important to share my story. You all remember it too well. And it seems like a long time ago now, but, but nonetheless, he was really, he was really impactful in my transition here and making me feel welcome in a place where there was a lot of, there was a lot of questions, let's just say that. And together we move forward. And he, he was a wonderful person to, to take over for, not just, I mean, he had big shoes to fill, no question about that, but, you know, he was always there to help, but not too much. And he then became an advocate at a whole nother level for Umbel ISD. So, it was almost like the district had two great superintendents working for it. And so all of that was very positive. And he will definitely be missed. And his family, Diane worked in Umbel ISD since his retirement, before she retired last year. And we loved having her here too. So, you know, condolences to them. And I just hope they know how much we all care for them and how many people here care for them. So, on a, on a different note, we, it's really interesting right now. It's like we're, we're doing all of our normal jobs and then we're, we're like building a plane as we fly at the same time, the coronavirus plane. And so we were very happy that the governor has endorsed our plan for an outdoor graduation ceremony in July. And after, after having done a little bit of feelers out there, it seems like what our families really want is consistency and dependability in a time that has been anything but that. And so we are going forward with our July graduation plans. There's a little conversation about whether or not indoors at NRG would ever be allowed. The commissioner's response to that was inside graduation in any venue is not likely to be approved in the foreseeable future. So, I don't think any of us should get excited about NRG. We've even joked about if the roof is open, does that make it outdoors? I think the, the sort of answer to that is no. The medical professionals do not feel that the roof open would be enough. So, if that changes, we do have a tentative date that you're all aware of. And if it doesn't change, the governor, I believe, has been very generous in allowing us to go forward with outdoor stadium graduations. So, we're really planning that that's likely to be the case. And we will see if the 25% that is currently in place, which is about 2,500 people in the stands, because we have a 10,000 capacity in our stands, will move perhaps to 50% in July, depending on how the economic reopening goes. If the economic reopening doesn't go well, we'll probably be staying at 25%. If it goes really well, as hair salons and gyms and restaurants and all those things come online, then perhaps the governor will consider with his strike force team a 50% capacity rule, which would be helpful to us. But we could, we can make 25% work. We're just excited that our students will be able to wear caps and gowns and have their names called and get a diploma cover and get that iconic photo at Turner Stadium. And we're looking forward to that opportunity to, to do that. All other senior things, picnics and project graduations and all that stuff are currently postponed. They are not canceled, however, they may have to be modified. They may become partially virtual. I mean, we're working through all those kind of things. But TEA has said they will give us more updates in, in the coming weeks on what will be allowed when. That includes potentially a glimpse into school opening and what that might look like. We've been having a lot of conversations internally. And it is our goal and our plan and our hope that on August 11th, Umbel ISD returns to school and, and we get to experience all of the things that we have loved about being together. However, all good and responsible leaders listen and pay attention to any kind of restrictions that may happen and begin to plan. Plan is actually, is, is quite a luxury for us because we've been faced with hurricanes and storms and, you know, pandemics that gave us no time to plan. So, it's, it's kind of nice to be able to have TEA and others say, hey, you may want to pay attention to the economic reopening. The governor may want to mirror some of that in the, in the education reopening. And so we're starting to talk about things like, what will it look like if we have a confirmed case on a campus? What will we need to do? We want to have all of that planned out, communicated out so that we can pivot on a minute's notice, whatever we need to do to, to make sure that our students and staff are safe. Another conversation that we're having statewide is that there are some families who have let us know that they will not be comfortable sending their children back to, to campus in fall because they have medically complicated or fragile people in their home. And they believe that if their child should bring this virus home, it would be a catastrophe for them as a family. And preliminary conversations with the commissioner have, have gone in a way that leads us to believe that TEA will allow students to stay home and begin virtual learning in the fall and will be funded students. So, that, that's something we're also putting into place. You know, most districts or, or even schools that create virtual schools spend years planning and preparing that. We will be doing that rather quickly. So, we'll be finding out via survey which students and staff are in that situation. And then we'll be looking at building unique master schedules for them that will accommodate those needs until a vaccine is available. No one seems to know when that might be, but these are things that we, we have to get ready for because of the conversations that are having at state level. And that's what we do, is that we work in the background to get all this stuff ready. But it's important, and I'm going to be like a broken record about this. It is our plan, it is our goal at this moment to start school on August 11th, as we always would. And until we are told something different than that, that is what we'll be doing. If we have to do a couple of weeks with a alternate schedule that slowly phases in attendance, then we will do that just for the safety and security. In the meantime, we are, Nolan and his team are doing a phenomenal job getting ready with all of the sort of thermometers and PPE stuff, sanitizers, all those kind of things that we're pretty sure we are going to need when we get to come back. And so there's lots and lots of prep and planning going on right now because we're really excited to return to our campuses in the fall. Another big topic of conversation that I feel like I need to just mention is calendars. There's a lot of districts having conversations about should they modify their calendars? Well, you know, our calendar already is that kind of calendar. What they're talking about is creating more of a year-round field that has breaks built into the year so that if they need to use those weeks for other purposes, they can. We already have that calendar. We have that week in October, we have a week in February, we have an entire week in November. We have multiple weeks in December and January, we have another week in March. We have that calendar right now. So, as I'm listening to these conversations and I'm participating in them, you know, we have to marry all the pieces of the puzzle and it has to make sense. And so when you're talking about what might be a, a thin budget year, when you're talking about the fact that we, we may not be looking at, you know, all, everybody being on campus all at the same time and what about if somebody has a positive test and this, that and the other? We have to marry this all together. And our calendar actually does that for us. Because if we find out in the fall through the reading assessments that we value that some of our students have fallen behind with this long break, you know, we can use some comp ed money. We can find teachers who are interested, we can bring those students in for additional support during October and again in February, maybe sometimes in November. And there's just a lot of opportunity in our calendar already. So, we are not planning to modify our calendar at this time. We're already a district of innovation, many districts are not. We have a calendar that is part of that process. It has a year-round field to it. It has a little bit shorter summer, still allows us to have jump starts in summer schools. Those will be virtual this year. But all of those things are in place in Umbel ISD. So, I'm saying this because a lot of people are trying to figure out, oh, I heard this, oh, I heard that. And I want people to know that we're paying attention to all of those things that the, that the commissioner and TEA are putting on the table. We're evaluating them in our own context. And one thing that we're pretty comfortable with is the flexibility that our calendar already offers. There's been a little bit of confusion about will we have to make up time if, if a campus has a positive case and they have to close for a quarantine period, will we have to make up that time? I think that there will be two options there. I think, one, if you can demonstrate that you can pivot to an online learning opportunity like we are now, that would be seamless and no different than the students who elect to continue online learning in the fall. The alternative to that would be to just shut down, like, like you do in a, in an ice storm or, we don't have those really. But you know what I mean, the alternative would be just to shut down and then you would have to make up that time. So, we're working through all those logistics, but our calendar offers enough flexibility that we don't see that it's necessary to change it. And the fact that TEA has already said that they're going to allow for some online learning leads us to believe that those days, minutes will count toward the 75,600 minutes that was already sort of pivoting to a more outcomes-based strategy for next year. They're being, they're, they understand that there's going to be disruption next year and that we all have to just plan to be disrupted and that we will go through this together and that they'll be in support. The other thing I just want to mention is that TEA has put out some online assessments, kind of starlight. kind of starlight for people who want them. We are not planning to use any of those. We have our own quality assessments that we value and that show us the longitudinal cohort data that we seek. They are more diagnostic in nature, and these online assessments are fraught with issues. So we're sticking with what we believe in and know so that we don't have any false starts and stops. I think those are the things that I wanted to make sure and, and mention to everyone. There's a lot, a lot, a lot, work going on behind the scenes right now in a very positive way. And so all of the things that you all have said about my team, our leaders on our campuses, our teacher leaders and others, all so well deserved, so true. People are doing amazing things. They are continuing the work forward, at the same time, planning for something that might look a little different or a lot different, and, and also being quality leaders and inspiring the work that is centered on students forward. So it's, it's going to be a positive thing, it's going to all be all right. We are working hard to make sure that's the case. We're excited to lead through another turbulent time, and we are doing all the background work to make that so. And thanks to Jamie Mountain, her team, the communication has been fantastic, consistent. The survey data has been extraordinarily useful. Every time, every day, there's a new thing that either TEA wants a new piece of information or we want a new piece of information and they jump right on it. So I really want to thank them for all that work. One of the number one questions I'm getting are from parents of band students, fine arts students, athletes, saying, what about that? What about that? And the commissioner was pretty strong with us on the difficulty of choir in a room and the difficulty of wind instruments in a room. There are going to have to be some really strong protocols and in order for anything like that in the fall. The other thing that they've been pretty strong on, and I don't know why this sport in particular, but basketball, has been one of the things that doctors have focused on as a challenge. I think it's because of the actual ball and the way that it all happens with body fluids. But, so things, we are committed, the UIL is committed, we all know the importance of fine arts and athletics to our students, our student athletes, our student artists, and we all want to move forward in that way. And we are being as creative as we possibly can, hoping that in June and July, we will be able to launch some opportunities. They're going to have to meet all the TA guidelines, all the CDC guidelines that gyms and other things are, have in place. But it's, it's a good news story for tennis and golf. Some of the outdoor sports have a lot more opportunity than, and particularly individual sports than some of the team sports, but we're working through all of those things. So I say this to say this, we know the things that are important to our students, and we are working really hard with the people who are making the decisions to try to get as much flexibility as possible, but still maintain appropriate safety measures. And we're going to continue to do that, and we will, we will send out more information as soon as we have it. So I'm sorry that was so long, but I had to update on a few items there. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Our next item are updates from the board associations and committees. First committee is audit. I will report. All the audits are done throughout the buildings. The only thing that is left is textbooks. So moving from that, the evaluation committee, there's, the evaluation committee has no report at this time, so we'll move to building and planning. Mr. Sitten.
Yes, we met, lots of things going on. The, I guess the one positive to take away from having the schools and the buildings shut down is that we're able to go ahead and begin summer projects early and get those taken care of, and we're able to start more projects than, than what we were planning at this time. So you should have all received the, the minutes from the meeting. I'll just run through some highlights, some fire alarm, communication replacements, tennis court lighting, Timberwood Middle School bleachers. UMBL High School, you'll see there's an agenda item tonight that we're going to go with construction manager at risk, or we're recommending construction manager at risk, and that is Manhattan Construction Company. Also, as part of the UMBL High School renovation, is the renovation of the Kate Center to turn it into a permanent home for Quest, early, early college high school, and it will be expanded to house up to 600 students. So really excited about that. The recommendation is for the Manhattan Construction Company to also build Lakeland Elementary and Elementary School 30 in Fall Creek. We talked a lot about them. I had, I wasn't that familiar with Manhattan. They did the football stadium at U of H. They did the Terminal C, the new Terminal C North at, at George Bush Airport. And they did the College of Business at University of Houston. So some really big projects, because one of the things that, that the committee was asking is, you know, are they big enough to take on these multiple projects at one time? And we're using so many different general contractors, and it was good to see someone new coming to the table that we haven't used before of this magnitude. Also, you're going to get a presentation tonight. We got to preview that, and that's the most recent PASA study. And I think you're going to be really excited about that and looking, looking at where the kids are coming from and what we're looking at as far as a build out. Let's see, I believe that's all that's going to be on the agenda. Got some, a couple of other things real quick. Because of the funding from FEMA for the Ag Barnes, we're able to move some things around, still get the transportation center going on the, on the north side, the Ag Barn on the north and the upgrades on the south. Charles Street Stadium, the, the original stadium from, I believe that promptly was bought in 1938 and began use in 1946. So it's getting a much-needed facelift as part of this, this most recent bond sale. Let's see, Elementary 29, which is Centennial Elementary, is on, on, on track. And all the stuff that's going out for bid right now is coming in very favorable. So as we get those numbers in, you're going to be very happy to see, knock on wood, so far, things are coming in at or, at or under budget. So a lot of good things are happening, and our next meeting will be May 19. That's all I have, Miss, Madam President.
Okay.
Quick question, quick question?
Sure.
Mr. Sitten, can you give an update on Kingwood Middle School? I had a parent ask me about that. I read through the April 9 summary, but you didn't say anything tonight. I'm just curious how that's going and when that's planning on opening.
Okay, is Nolan, Nolan available to answer that in more detail?
I am, Mr. Chair. Basically, we are getting ready to put it out for bid as we speak. We had a pre-conference, pre-bid proposal already. It's ready to go on the street. Kingwood Middle School would go out, and then the proposal is that it would open in 22, August of 22.
Good, that's what I figured. Thank you.
Okay, the next committee report is finance. We have our first, we have our budget workshop coming up next week on May 19, and I think you'll be very pleased at the priorities that have been set forth now. They could change, but I think you'll also be, Mr. Seal, build us in, and this district has taken care of itself, and we are in good standing. And so I look forward to the bud, the budget workshop next week with all of you, so you can see it all. Advocacy Committee.
We have nothing to report, thank you.
No report tonight, Madam President.
Kingwood Neighborhood Council.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we move into our action items from closed session. For A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Scarfo, do I have a motion?
Yes, I do, Madam President. I move to approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second?
Second, okay.
Okay, we have a second. I'm going to ask everyone to raise your hand, and then I will tell Ms. Martin how many votes we have. So all those in favor? Ms. Martin, we have seven members for. Motion's passed. Action 4B.
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the probationary contracts of the employees identified in this item in the best interest of the district and authorize the superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Ms. Martin, there's seven in four. Motion has passed. Item 4C, Contract Renewals.
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve the contract recommendations for employees for the 2000 to 21, 2000 school year as presented in closed session in the contract listing, and further authorize the superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mrs. Martin, there's seven for. The motion has passed. 4D, Proposed Non-Renewal of Term Contracts.
Madam President, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the proposed non-renewal of the term contracts of certain employees identified in this item at the end of the 2019 to 2020 contract term for the reasons stated in Board Policy DFBB. Further designate the manner of hearing to be a hearing before the board and authorize the superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same and any hearings requested pursuant to the same.
Second.
I have, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Ms. Martin, I have seven in favor, motion passes. All right, we move on to our consent agenda. Moving to item five, our consent agenda. What I will do is I will read each item, and I will pause after each item, should someone want to pull. Item 5A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on April 14, 2020. Item 5B, Goods, Professional Services and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate of, or $25,000 individually. 5C, 2019, 2020 Construction and Construction-Related Purchases. 5D, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments, Including a Transfer Out to Fund $681 for Flood Mitigation. 5E, Bond Transfers and Amendments. 5F, Tax Refunds. 5G, Waiver of PNI. 5H, Approval of RFP Number 202002 General Merchandise. 5I, Board Authorization for Inter-local Agreements. 5J, Consideration of Construction Services for the UMBL High School Addition and Renovations Project. 5K, Change Order Number Two, Elementary School 29 Construction, Centennial Elementary. 5L, General Contractor Selection for Elementary 30 Construction and Lakeland Elementary Replacement. 5M, General Contractor Selection for the Multi-Campus Fire Alarm and Mass Communication System Replacement Project. 5N, Architect Selection for Athletic Grandstands and Bleachers Project. 5O, Architect Selection for Charles Street Stadium Renovations. 5P, Architect Selection for Middle School Locker Room Project. 5Q, Amendment of Architect Contract for the FEMA Flood Mitigation Project. 5R, Instructional Materials for Proclamation 2020. Mr. Scarfo, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve consented item, the agenda items as presented.
Madam, Madam President, question really quickly, don't we need to pull A because Brent wasn't there? I just thought about that.
I don't believe so, Stephanie, he was not.
Madam President, right now, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda as to Mr. Engalagi. And he is welcome to vote on the meeting minutes, it's not a legal requirement, it's just many board members do, personal preference-wise choose, it's not legally required. So Mr. Engalagi, if you feel comfortable voting on the meeting minutes, you're welcome to do so. If not, I can help kind of walk through the amended motion or...
No, that's fine, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All, okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we had some discussion. All those in favor? Okay, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I have seven votes for. We have no pulled items, so there are no more action items tonight. We have an informational item, the item 7A, the 2019, 2020 Democratic Study for UMBLISD.
I'm trying to unmute. Madam President, as you know, and, and board, that UMBLISD is a fast, fast-growth school district. It's a great problem to have. We have a lot of families who want to live in our school district and have their children attend our schools, and we think that is the highest compliment and also a huge economic resource to our community, our local businesses, our cities, all of that. As more and more folks come in, it's a positive economic outcome. And so as all good district leadership teams and boards do, we want to have some new and refreshed data for our planning, potentially a future bond, et cetera. We just need this information to understand what the needs are for our community going forward and so what we do to prepare for it. So tonight, we have invited the folks from PASA, who are demographers, to come and share with you an overview of their, their work. And you all also have a copy of their full work, all the attachments, all the background information. So as much of that as you'd like to pour through, you've got it available to you. But tonight, they're going to give a good overview for us. Please keep in mind, and I know they're going to say this also, that obviously this study was done prior to a pandemic. However, because of the way PASA approaches this, they approach it from a low, medium, and high growth curve. So you obviously can make adjustments as we see going forward based on what we see happen around us. I mean, this is really unknown right now, whether or not housing sales will slow down because interest rates are really good. So there's a lot of things in play right now. Will people move? Will they maximize those interest rates? Some of the builders are saying yes, they are. So I'd like to introduce the folks from PASA and have them present their work to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm Justin Solhavi, I'll be presenting first, and then my colleague Stacy Tapera, she'll take over discussing more about how our projections will affect the actual campuses as usual. And many great points were just made, in particular about the mortgages and some of the uncertainty. And we were able to capture a little bit of what was happening in March and early April in our projections. So I'll go over, you know, how we, how we corrected for some of it and, and a lot of the unknowns as I move forward. Really quick, am I sharing a screen or are you controlling it?
Justin, we can't see your screen.
Okay, that's, I'm going to share mine, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure, I've done it in several ways where sometimes the district had control.
Yeah, no, you're going to share your screen, 100%.
All right, great. Alright, great. Okay, everyone should be able to see, is that correct?
I can see it.
Great. There we go. Okay. So, we've been working with the district for just about two decades now. Usually, we work at, we put out a new set of projections, if you will. Every few years, we don't typically work with the district every year. Last year, you heard from us, we had done a mini update for the rezoning. But this was a full-blown study and a lot of it was conducted in January, February, and March. So, you know, some of the data that was collected in January and February, we had just started hearing about the COVID-19 virus at the time. And of course, once we were finalizing our projections in March and early April, we were able to make some adjustments. But just understand, the data is, was collected, most of it was collected prior to the pandemic and the situation is still fluid. With that, we were able to make some adjustments with our housing projections and overall enrollment group. So I'll go over that later on, but we'll be exploring the the housing growth and boom that's happening in Umbel ISD at the moment. But first off, I want to really just go over the economy. So let's look back into 2019 and truly the year prior, Houston Metro had 62,000 new jobs created and that was on the heels of about, if I recall correctly, about 80,000 in 2018. So, job growth had been fairly strong over the last two or three years, really ever since Harvey. And after the oil and gas sector slump in 2016. And unemployment was also pretty strong. And truthfully, the Greater Houston Partnership had already been estimating a job growth decline in the metro area. So they were already projecting fewer jobs in 2020 back in January prior to the pandemic. So we were already going to be seeing about 20,000 fewer annual jobs created. And then now, moving forward, we have, we're starting to get more projections come out on what the future may hold. Although I really would just hold that to a grain, but we're not hold much faith to these at this moment in time, maybe in a few more months, we'll know a little more. But truly, the oil industry takes about six to eight months to start seeing job losses in the Houston region typically. We've already started seeing them. But sometimes it can be a little misleading, we've seen some companies in recent weeks move here or announce that their headquarters will move here, while we've also seen others slash jobs. So, one economist, Dr. Perriman, he tends to think we'll see over 200,000 job losses, many of which we've already seen in the metro area. Next year, about 80% of those could bounce back, we could regain those, you know, mostly in the retail sector. So we could still be looking at job losses next year and not a full recovery. So, this is going to be with us for a couple of years, most likely. Most people do not believe it will be as bad as, of course, the 87 oil bust, but it should be worse than our last recession. Our last recession, Houston was spared a little bit because we were in the midst of a fracking boom and an oil and gas and energy sector boom. So, we always start these presentations with a look at how the district compares to other districts in the metro area. Today is no exception. This first map here shows you Umbel ISD compared to other districts. This data is very fresh from the TEA, this is total district enrollment. And Umbel is ranked number 10 with over 45,000 students this year. And then the next map is showing you some growth changes. This first one is a one-year growth map showing Umbel at 1,500 students added just in one year. A lot of districts saw very large gains this year in pre-K and kindergarten. And in pre-K in particular, many districts saw growth due to half-day going to full day. So next year, some of those gains will not be realized, but you're still ranking very high up there with Fort Ben, Lamar, Conroe, and Katy. Looking five years out there, the last five years, Umbel has seen over 5,500 new students enroll in the district. So that puts you at a very high growth rate. Now, a lot of those students are in the younger cohorts. So we've seen upwards of 400 to 7, anywhere from four to five, upwards of 700 new elementary students added every year, depends on the year, over the last four to five years. And we like to look at the youngest cohort of that, and that's the kindergarten population. That blue line is showing you the kindergarten enrollment every year, going back almost two decades. Where you see that blue line turn into a hatch or a dotted blue line, that's where we are today and where we think we're going over the next four to five years based on the number of births that we've seen. This does not factor in new housing, we'll get to that later on. But we have seen the births somewhat level off in Umbel and that's no different from a lot of other large suburban school districts in the state. You'll see there that, looking forward a few years, in fact, the birth, number of births have actually declined. And that was a statewide trend that we started seeing about three years ago. So even though you're having a lot of new housing and new residents, you're about to start seeing a little bit of a decline in the number of youngsters that aren't even in school yet. So, we're not anticipating a huge increase in kindergarteners over the next few years, but we are projecting some. Now here, this chart just shows you the overall growth every year. You can see those last about seven years, tremendous growth ever since that last recession. And so a lot of those students are younger. They're going to be working their way through the secondary grades in the coming years. So even if we stop seeing new residents moving to Umbel, because of all the growth that we've seen over the last few years, anticipate more overall K-12 growth in the school district. So we like to also state how housing developers tend to trend, tend to pick certain school districts to build in and Umbel is no exception. And that's why you're having the boom right now. And one thing about Umbel that sets you apart is your higher wealth individuals, households that live in the district. And Umbel ranks number nine in terms of percent economically disadvantaged students, so the lowest, for instance, the lowest district with the smallest percentage of economically disadvantaged students is Springswood. Umbel is number nine, so in the northeast quadrant of Houston, Umbel is kind of standing out there as having a low economically disadvantaged population. And builders tend to like to go toward areas that are a little more prosperous, right? They know they can sell more houses. And if you look at the statewide, or all the 20 largest districts in Texas, Umbel actually ranks nine in terms of the lowest economically disadvantaged numbers out of those 20 largest districts. We always, every year, take a look at transfer students. So are we going to see any private schools opening or how about charter schools? These are the questions we have to ask. And we take a look at where you're at today. And what we've come up with is that Umbel has about, they retain about 96.4% of all the students living inside the boundary. That other 4%, roughly, they attend charter schools, private schools, or they go to other districts. They transfer to districts nearby. So that share is actually fairly high. A lot of suburban districts are between 90 and 95%. So you're retaining a lot of students. Now, charter school expansions are happening and that's why a lot of districts are losing students, but they haven't really occurred in the far north, these suburbs yet. We do have a few idea campuses, they're the school that started in the Rio Grande Valley. Their first Houston campuses are opening up in Spring ISD and in Houston ISD, all on the north side. They opened up in August, I assume they're still opening up. But basically, those will not be affecting Umbel. You might have a few students going to them, but not too many just because of their, they're not close. But they are opening up as ultimate capacities of about 1,500. They have about, they have plans for about six other campuses in the metro area. Of course, we don't know where those are yet. So if any of those were to occur inside Umbel, you can anticipate students moving toward the charter systems. Most new charter schools have been expanding in the far west suburbs. For instance, Katy, Cyfair. And so this map right here is showing you just that. It shows you percentages of residents, resident K-12 students in public schools that are actually in charter systems. So you can see here, the central core districts of Houston, Aleve, and even Galveston have the highest transfer rates for charter systems. Umbel is way down the list, you're below 2%. But a lot of comparable school districts in the west suburbs to you guys, Katy, Cyfair, Klein, have well over 2%, 3% transfer rates to charters. So it's something to watch out for, although we're not anticipating any opening at this time. Moving on to housing, and so this is really what's going to drive a lot of your growth, it's what has been driving your growth. This map here is showing you basically the urban extent, you're almost fully built out, you're at 90% buildout. You might be able to see these orange areas and light orange areas. They're mostly between 1960 and Atascocita on the western side of the district. That's really where most of the raw land is that's still to be purchased by developers or that hasn't really started developing yet. So most everything else is accounted for or either in some sort of development stage. And that's really important as we move on talking about long-term.
Justin, I'm sorry, when you say the 90% and what you have left there in the undeveloped, yellow, you're talking as far as residential buildout. Including, that land couldn't, wouldn't be going commercial or is it?
Really, really, I'm talking about all land. So even on this map, we've considered, for instance, landfills or parks. We've considered that to be urbanized. So truly, it could also go commercial or industrial. So not all of it will be residential land and that's actually a good point. Some of that land along East Tex Freeway won't have residential development. The next couple of maps, it's a map series, we're basically showing you hotspots of growth. No one's going to be shocked as to where these are because there's really only one big hotspot left in Umbel, that's the southern portion of the district where Val Moral and the Groves and Lakewood Pines is. So this is the first five years of the projection period going through October 2024. And this is a good point for me to explain for anyone who's not familiar. All of our projections go to the end of October. So when we say annual projection, we're focusing that number on October snapshot. That's when the TEA takes their official enrollment count of each district in the state. So typically, it takes a few months for your enrollment to actually increase to its peak, which is in about October. Some districts peak a little later, but that's generally what we see. So this is a hotspot map by Planning Unit. Our Planning Units split up the district by attendance zone and neighborhoods. And so these are great tools for you guys to use in planning new catchment areas for future attendance boundaries. All of our data is outlined by Planning Unit in the report that you'll receive. But here you go with those red spots, Val Moral, Groves, Lakewood Pines, and then even a hotspot of apartments along Westlake Houston. If you, if you draw a circle and one mile out from the Will Clayton-Westlake-Houston intersection, you've got about 1,500, just shy of 1,500 apartment units currently in development or leasing up around that intersection. One of them is a senior apartment which won't have students, but the other five will. One of them is already partially occupied. But that is a very, very dense area of new multifamily growth where we're anticipating in those five to six apartment complexes upwards of 250 students. Not happening right away, it's going to take a while for them to finish building and lease up. But it is substantial. It's rare to see that many apartments go up all at once in one very particular area. And there are other areas to look out for, for instance, Kingwood, Royal Brook. They're still seeing quite a bit of development. And then some scattered development in the west in many different subdivisions. But when we look at the latter half of the projection period, to me, this is very interesting. You really see the color go away on the map. There's not as many oranges and reds and that's really because some of these neighborhoods are going to have already had a lot of build-out occur. And so you'll still see development occurring in the latter half of the projection period, just not as much. You're just going to run out of land, frankly. So looking back over the last five years, those blue lines here on this chart are showing you annual housing starts in Umbel. Last year, it was pretty phenomenal, you had almost 1,900 new housing starts. This data is really looking at all single-family housing development in the district, not multifamily. But it was parallel to what the metro area has seen over the last few years. There's been an increase in housing ever since the fracking bust of 2016, no surprise. But really, I think you might have peaked last year because I have a feeling our housing might slow a bit over the next couple of years and go over that in a second. These single-family housing developments are anticipated to bring in the most new occupancies over the next 10 years. And so Val Moral and the Groves, no surprise, they top the list with 2,000 and about 1,100 respectively. But all these other developments here, these are your highest-growth neighborhoods. Lakewood Pines is also high-growth, but then you get down to some of these others like Townsend Landing. That's the development west of 59, up in the far northwest. It's virtually all in floodplain. The homes were supposedly going to be elevated. We've been very conservative with that neighborhood just because it hasn't really gotten going yet. So you'll see there, most of our projections for it are in the latter half of the period. But all these other ones start to add up and you really have over 9,000 single-family homes projected over the next 10 years in the district. And this is just a full list of all of our apartments we've projected for. We've even projected for some that haven't even been planned yet. We just have to assume if there is a location that's very viable as a multifamily property, if we think it has a 50% chance of developing as one, we project for it. But the bulk of multifamily is also in the first five years, a lot of it's already under construction. So this is kind of alluding to that. This chart is showing you the total number of housing units we've projected in the 10-year and that's over 15,000. It includes single-family apartments and even age-restricted housing. When you look at these bars, though, the blue bars are the first five years. So again, it's that build-out is occurring and so the orange bars of the last five years, both in single-family and multifamily, we're anticipating a decline in housing over the course of the 10-year period. No surprise, and it's fairly dramatic. And of course, we have districts where this is the exact opposite because they're farther out and they're on the fringe where there's more land available. But I will tell you this, our projections were finalized late enough. We did account for about a 15% to 30% decline in new housing occupancies, particularly in the 2021-2022 timeframe. And really, a lot of that's due to just the uncertainty with the oil situation. If we see a lot more oil jobs being lost in the next six to 18 months, we're definitely going to see a drop in housing. So we have accounted for that slightly, we didn't want to go overboard because of course, the mortgage situation is still very strong. That is the opposite of what we had going on back in the Great Recession in the late 2000s. So we do have buyers out there, but we do think the oil crisis could cause a little bit of a slowdown for Houston in particular over the long haul. Now, most of your growth, this chart here is looking at the last year, most of your growth has been occurring, no surprise. Most of your growth has been occurring, no surprise, in actively building subdivisions. Places like Balmoral, the Groves. And so 61% of your growth from 2018 to 2019 occurred in these types of developments. That's not to say you, you didn't have growth elsewhere. There were other developments that maybe finished building out a few years ago, but we're still seeing students age forward in those neighborhoods. So there you have growth as well. And we're seeing a little growth in apartments. You'll see a lot more growth in apartments over the next few years since you've had so many under construction. When we think about how many students are living in each house, though, it's very different from one neighborhood to the next. You know, a senior housing community is going to have zero students. Whereas a single-family neighborhood like the Groves is going to have typically over 0.7 to 0.75 students living in, in every house. And so on average in UML, there are 0.65 students living in every single-family home. So for every 100 homes, you get 65 students. In terms of multifamily, it's quite a bit lower. So you're only seeing a ratio of 0.36 to every, for every multifamily unit. And that's typical because a lot of apartments have one-bedroom units mixed in. So when you look at what, where you've trended, we, we went back and, and looked at all your reports from the past. And that ratio of students per home has trended down, especially ever since 2007. So that's really due to aging. So neighborhoods in Kingwood and say Eagle Springs is a good example. You're now seeing those neighborhoods actually lose students because they're aged out and maybe they're not being replaced as quickly. You, you're having people stay in their homes through retirement. And multifamily has trended a little upwards since then. You're seeing a lot more students in apartments. That's pretty much been the case across the board everywhere that we work. There's just more families ever since the recession choosing to live in apartments. They may not be able to afford down payments on homes. Now, putting all of this into, looking at the past a little bit and looking forward, what we're showing here are your, your blue bars again are your enroll, it's your enrollment. So you're at, you know, about 45,000 today. And we've also added the future bars. So that those light blue bars are where we're projecting your enrollment to go. Now, we've, we've thrown on here a couple of other lines. The red line are your charter transfers. It, it stays, it's staying pretty constant. We haven't really seen an increase in charter transfers. But that yellow line are your annual new home sales or your new home closings. And then our projected new home occupancies. And you can see there that that drops off. So if that red line were to increase, you started seeing more charter students enrolling over the next 10 years, a lot of that is just very uncertain because we don't know where they're going to choose to build. You might see fewer students in, in, you know, enroll the number ISD schools, mainly because you're going to start running out of housing. So your housing growth won't be there to keep boosting your enrollment. So any change with another variable such as charter schools could affect your enrollment long term. And that would be something we talk about in a second in your lower growth scenario. So one question we get a lot is, how accurate are you guys? You know, where, where did we stand before? So we've thrown up here a couple of bar charts showing you essentially our work compared to your actual enrollment from our last study, which was in January 2016. And so the blue number above each one is showing you the difference. So we've, we've been fairly accurate with UML. That's great. Not every district has that luxury. But with you guys, you're usually within about 100 students of what we projected as our moderate growth scenario. So last year, a little bit, you were, you were higher. There was just a really large influx of students, particularly from new housing. And Harvey played a little bit of a role in that, I believe. We've seen certain neighborhoods re, have a little bit more student regeneration than would have been expected otherwise. Maybe people rebuilt their homes, turned them over, and now new families living in them. So when we look at the moderate growth scenario, just, just a reminder, the last few years, you've been gaining, last year, you gained 1,500 students. But this year, in 2020, we've gone ahead and projected a little lower. And what we've done is over the next three to four years, we've, we've decreased the amount of new housing, remember by about 15 to 25, 30%, depending on the year, which has spread out that growth a little more. So you're seeing, you, you might see that new housing, the occupied, it might take a little longer. Whereas a higher growth scenario would show it, the build out occurring quite a bit faster. Now you're seeing fewer years of 1,000-plus students, but more years of numbers increasing between 700 and 800 students. So I think that's a good thing if this does end up happening. You'll, you'll have, you won't be increasing by as many students as quickly, especially as you're adding on to campuses or, or building new ones. So ultimately, by 2029, we're looking at just shy of 52,000 students. You can see there those last few years, starting in about 2026, that number doesn't change all that much. You know, we're, we're not increasing as much as we were. And that's just because of that build out that's starting to occur. So our three scenarios of growth really show that that dotted line there, we're at 45,000 today. The dotted line is our moderate growth scenario. But that high-growth scenario, let's say, really, people continue to buy housing at the same pace. That's what our high-growth scenario is saying. It, you'll see there that it increases a little bit more in the first five years. But then it kind of gets closer to that moderate growth scenario going back in the latter five years. A lower growth scenario, as I mentioned earlier, we might see some surprises in three, four, or five years. What if a charter school moves into the UML area? What if two do? We could be seeing lesser enrollment because of that. Or our economy could really take a nosedive and we could lose upwards of 200,000 jobs instead of the 40,000 to 50,000 that are, that are predicted. So a lot of uncertainty still in the coming months. But, but we'll, we'll know, I'd say, in about six to 12, what the future holds a little better. So with that, I'll have Stacy take the wheel, and she'll talk about how a lot of this will affect your individual campuses.
Thank you very much.
Stacy, do you want me to just continue moving the slides?
Yeah, sure, that'd be fine. Thank you. Okay, so the map that you're looking at at this point is a similar hotspot map as you've seen that Justin showed earlier. But these represent the number of students rather than the number of housing units that we project in the next 10 years. In this case, it's elementary students. Again, it's no surprise that the hotspots are in the Balmoral and Groves area as well as Lakewood Pines. Again, these are our elementary students projected. Justin, please, next slide. The, the summary of these newly added students is summarized here by attendance zone. And so not surprisingly, you see that the Groves attendance zone is projected to gain 564 elementary students over the next 10 years, followed by Lakeshore and Centennial with each about 330 students in addition to those that live there already. And these also are, are going to be added by the flex, the students living in the flex zone, which sum to about almost 500 students also. So clearly, the, the long-term growth potential is in the southeastern portion of the district. And that's no surprise to anyone. Next slide. So these are the numbers that are a little busy and, and, and we'll walk through them in a little. It'll make a little bit more sense here in a minute. But let me remind you that we are demographers and we project where students are going to live. So these numbers represent the resident students projected to live in each attendance zone over the next 10 years. The gray column is the number of resident students that lived in that attendance zone last October, this, this year, October of 2019. Now, before you get anxious about these numbers not matching what you know to be enrollment, remember that, again, these are resident students. And so, for example, I, I draw your attention to Whispering Pines. Last October, there were 990 students living in the Whispering Pines attendance zone. But we all know that there weren't that many students attending, attending school in Whispering Pines. So I draw your attention to the rightmost column where the transfers show that 236 net students transferred out of Whispering Pines. So that's why you, that's why Whispering Pines is not as overcrowded as it would appear by the resident population. But again, we have to look at where students live and where we're projecting them to live in the future. So, so know that, that we take these transfers into account. But we can't project where you are going to move a bilingual program or where parents are going to teach and transfer their kids into, into a different school. So we just have to kind of assume that those transferred patterns remain consistent until a program is changed. So the first step that I'd like to bring your attention to, next slide please, is the construction of Elementary 30 and the reconstruction, rebuild of Lakeland. Those new facilities will address short-term overcrowding at Fall Creek, Ridge Creek, and River Pines. And those zoning efforts are underway are, are getting underway currently with the zoning committee. And so this will, these, this new capacity will address the short-term overcrowding. Again, you see 1,151 resident students living in Fall Creek and over 1,000 each in Ridge Creek and River Pines right now and projected to grow next fall as well. However, that's not the end of, of the story for growth in, in UML ISD. As you recall from the previous slides, the hotspots of long-term growth are on the southeast side, focusing on Groves and Centennial and Lakeshore. And so the long-term numbers for each of those schools, Groves is the winner with 1,450 students projected to live in the Groves attendance zone and over 1,000 in, in the others as well. So at some point, something needs to be done to address the overcrowding at those schools. As perhaps an earlier and, and maybe a stopgap measure may be to consider the flex zones that are currently flexing between Atascocita Springs, Groves, and Eagle Springs and Groves. So if some of those students can be zoned back to Atascocita Springs and Eagle Springs, that could provide some short-term relief for the Groves. But again, that's just, that's just one possibility. And there's also the possibility of expansions or, or rezoning into some of the other nearby schools that, that are built out and in some cases aging out. Next slide. So at the middle school level, again, these are resident students. And so don't get anxious about these numbers not matching what you know to be enrollment. I show this map to really draw your attention to the south part of the district. Not surprising that UML Middle School, Westlake, and Wood Creek are, are facing overcrowding issues in the, in the future, currently and in the future, and will be the, the, the areas in need of next capacity relief. Next slide. So these are the numbers. In white are the numbers you saw on the map previously. And those represent the resident students. The bright yellow numbers represent the enrolled students for October 2019. And they, and if we assume that the transfer pattern will remain the same and apply the, the, the net transfers in and out of each school to their projected residence in the future, then that gives us the yellow numbers. So what, what we see here, for example, at UML Middle School, 1,505 students live in the UML Middle School zone, but we know that that many don't attend because a net of 244 students transfer out. So 1,261 were enrolled in UML Middle School in the fall. And we project that to grow by almost 200 students by the end of this projection period. But the real focus is at Wood Creek and Westlake in that Wood Creek is already looking at upwards of almost, almost 1,800 students next fall, assuming the transfer patterns hold. And, and growing from there, and followed by Westlake with over 1,400 students next fall. So the conclusion of this is that middle school 10 in the south can be well utilized as soon as it can be built in order to relieve those three middle schools of overcrowding. At the high school level, again, we're looking at resident students. And particularly at the high school level, there's a lot of transfers. So these really, really will differ from enrollment. We'll get to that in a minute.
Stacy, can I ask you a quick question? I'm so sorry.
Sure.
Um, I've noted, I noticed on the elementary, middle school, and high school maps that the kind of moderate growth area of the Royal Brook neighborhood didn't take into account the new zoning from a couple of years ago. So, so, because Royal Brook is Kingwood Park, Kingwood Middle, and Elm Grove. But I wasn't sure if that was just a map issue, or, or maybe I'm reading, maybe I'm reading it wrong.
We can, we can certainly take a look at it, but I, I'm, I'm fairly certain that these zones, they, they came from the district. But we, we can certainly look into it. I'll, I'll get with Terry Perkins after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So at the high school level, the, the growth in the south, of course, is, is most pronounced at UML High School as well as Summer Creek. Next slide, please. Again, we're looking at the resident students are the white, the smaller white numbers. And the residents plus and minus transfers are in yellow. So that matches what you know to be the enrollment. The three, well, the two schools in the south, furthest in the south, which we, I mentioned earlier, UML High School as well as Summer Creek are the schools that are going to be seeing the, the most overcrowding. Summer Creek is projected to exceed 400, 4,000 resident students by fall of 2023. And, and UML High School is also exceeded, projected to exceed about 3,600 students by that year compared to its 2,800 capacity. But again, there are a considerable number of students transferring out of UML, UML High School to both Summer Creek as well as Quest High School. So the highest, the high number of transfers that you see over on the right-hand column is a result of, largely a result of students attending Quest High School. So what needs to be done about this growth in the south and the overcrowding, particularly given the, the situation that the district faces as you near, as you near build out? Next slide. The first option has been talked about for years. It's building the sixth and final high school. The district owns a site in the southeast. And if you look at the two southernmost schools I've been focusing on, Summer Creek and UML High School, if you add together their capacity, they have a cumulative capacity of 6,000. But they have a cumulative resident students of 9,000 at the end of this projection period, which is basically build out for all practical purposes. So theoretically, you could pull 3,000 students from those two existing schools, Summer Creek and UML, and send them to a new high school and utilize that high school at 3,000 students and have Summer Creek and UML still at 100% utilization, fully utilized. Theoretically. However, as the, the district reaches build out, there is some concern about overbuilding. And do this district really need that sixth high school? Or could we expand the existing high schools and, and decrease those operating costs? And so one, one possibility would be to expand the capacity of Atascocita, UML, and Summer Creek to 4,000 students each. That would still leave about 800 students in excess in those three schools in the south at the end of this projection period. But with an expansion of Quest up to 600 students, then much of that could be accommodated But with an expansion of Quest up to six hundred students, then much of that could be accommodated, um, by the Quest campus. There would, there would need to be some, some rezoning for rebalancing that population. But, um, it, and it would be tight, um, but it is a possibility. It should the district and the community decide that that was the way that, that best meets their needs. However, especially given all of the, um, everything that's happened in the past few months, it's important that we think about how this relates to the, the low and low-growth scenario. The next slide, please, Justin. The numbers that I've just shown you are moderate growth scenario. Yes?
Can I ask, just going back, when you mentioned Quest, um, is that really, um, a help? Because you can't force people to go to Quest. That's a choice to go to Quest.
Sure.
You can't assume that Quest would be a relief out for the four hundred or whatever students, correct?
That's true, but currently, the four hundred students that attend Quest come largely from those three schools in the south. I think there are only maybe about fifty students or so that come from Kingwood and Kingwood Park.
Right, I understand, but okay.
So, and yes, you can't, you certainly can't, um, force that, you know, two hundred have to come from Summer Creek and two hundred have to come from Umla and two hundred from Tascasita. I mean, I guess you could, but, but I, that's not necessarily the, the way the, these sorts of magnetized campuses work. So the numbers that I've been presenting are moderate growth scenario. And as Justin mentioned several times, these, um, these have been downturned in, in early March, mid-March, um, by about fifteen to thirty percent compared to what we would have projected in, say, January. So the moderate growth scenario is al- already downturned somewhat as a result of COVID and the oil industry. However, if we look at the low-growth scenario, that would be, as Justin mentioned, assuming not forty thousand job losses, but two hundred thousand permanent job loss, losses, and about twenty-five to forty percent decline in new housing rather than fifteen to thirty percent. So in that scenario, in ten years, the high school population would be about sixteen thousand four hundred compared to the seventeen thousand three hundred or so that we were talking about previously. And just to be, for the sake of being very, very complete, we even created this even lower growth scenario that isn't really reasonable, but it's just for illustration purposes, that if no new houses were built in the district, again, between now and the next ten years, there was no new housing, and an overall fifty percent decline in student growth annually, there would still be fifteen thousand four hundred or so high school students at the end of this decade. And basically, that, that illustrates that, uh, the, another point that Justin made earlier is that the younger students in the district will be aging through. Even if, if nobody else moves in and no, no new houses are built, you still have a larger, younger population than an older population. And so that, there will be some natural aging as those students age through. So these numbers give you, um, a, a chance to think about sort of the what-ifs when you're making the decisions about how to handle the high school. So in summary, the first step at the elementary level is, is currently underway with the construction of Elementary Number Thirty in Fall Creek and the, and the newly reconstructed Lakeland with a larger capacity. And in order, in, in scheduled to open in the fall of twenty-one. And then longer term, additional capacity slash zoning slash, um, changing the flex situation or something in order to relieve Groves and Centennial, uh, on the east side. At the middle school level, Middle School Ten can be utilized as soon as you can get it open. And at the high school level, um, additional capacity is clearly needed in the south. Um, and it can be utilized as soon as twenty twenty-three, even though that's a, that's a tall order for high school capacity. But, um, so this is the, the point that the district needs to have some, um, conversations and, and soul-searching about the priorities of the, the community and the district and, and how best to fulfill the projected, uh, need for high school capacity. So at this point, Justin and I can both take any questions.
Well, first of all, Justin and Stacy, I wanna, I want to thank you for a very thorough report. Uh, anybody, any questions? We have a lot to think about.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Sure. Um, so the first is, um, so the, the study goes through twenty twenty-nine. So from what I understand, we're currently at about ninety percent buildout. At twenty twenty-nine, would that be sort of, uh, what percentage would you put us at in twenty twenty-nine?
I, I'd say you'd be closer to ninety-five. You're, it's gonna take, to, to get to a hundred percent buildout, I don't know if you ever, no one ever actually gets to a hundred percent. You know, by the time you start thinking in those terms, you start rebuilding. And so, um, yeah, you're always gonna have those few pockets of land that just sit dormant forever. I can think of a few along nineteen sixty that have some, uh, energy companies who own them and, and there's possible contamination, there's floodplain issues and, and things like that. So, yeah, it, I, I would say closer to ninety-five. And, uh, like I said, some of that will still be commercial as well.
And so really, by twenty twenty-nine, um, we'll be at a functional buildout scenario because there's always potential for, you know, growth later. So my, I guess my question, especially when we're looking at the high school scenarios that were presented, is that, um, what do you, as demographers, typically see once an area gets to this functional buildout stage? And kind of goes through the aging cycle? What's a typical decrease in student population over time for those areas?
I'm sure Stacy's thinking the same thing I am right now.
Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and say it. Uh, you know, twenty years ago, my answer may have been different, but I was in no position twenty years ago to answer the question. The answer today is it continues to decline. Um, and that is pretty much solely because of the charter school situation. And so, um, that's, that's from my opinion. In, in general, in areas like Umla, you don't see a lot, the, the, the housing stock tends to be favorable for people who already live there, and they tend to stick in those homes, they stay there. And so, we, when we see neighborhoods like, uh, Kingwood and Eagle Springs losing people, or students rather, that's telling me people like to live there. And so generally, we never see that enrollment go back to that peak level as long as your demographics kind of stay the same and you're always considered a really highly-regarded school district or, or neighborhood. So I, I would say you're not going to really see a growth spurt in the high school level especially. Once you kind of hit that buildout, you'll probably stay around there. And honestly, you know, ten years from now, the charter school situation, I just don't know. And so that's, that's been the wild card lately in some of our districts like Fort Bend, um, Spring, you know, Sycophyr. They're, they're just continuing to kind of lose enrollment slowly, even with the aging process.
But what it sounds like to me is that it would be a fair assumption to say that once we hit that buildout stage, not taking the charter school into account, which obviously we would still want to do, um, there will be some natural just leveling out and maybe even a decline that we would need to factor into any future, um, high school options.
It's possible, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, you could be looking at that. Uh, some, you know, that already has started happening in neighborhoods in the north because they're older. That would then start to happen in some of these newer neighborhoods today. We generally say, you start to see, it takes about fifteen to twenty years, believe it or not, to see losses in the elementary level, um, in neighborhoods like, um, Eagle Springs, for instance. I think that's a perfect example in your, your area right now. And so then that high school level decline would start a little later. So it takes a while.
Thank you.
We, we get asked often, what about Spring Branch? Why did they have to, um, close schools? Uh, they were growing so fast and then they, and they overbuilt and then they had to close schools. And we don't want to find ourselves in that situation. But the situation with Spring Branch is that they built out very quickly, um, within, you know, a ten or fifteen-year period. And so everybody that moved in and bought all those new houses was at the same stage of the life cycle within, within reason. And so when those kids aged through, they had, they had to build the schools because the kids were there. But then as they aged through, um, there was not the, um, the, the gradual, uh, aging out and regeneration that happens if the houses are built, um, more stretched out over time, right? And so, um, I don't think that Umla has to worry about that sort of rapid deceleration in, in, or, or decline in student enrollment, um, that places like Spring Branch saw because you are highly regarded, like Justin mentioned, and also because of the, the long, uh, building period over which, uh, Umla ISD grew.
So can I ask a question? So, so are you saying then that we don't necessarily need to focus on a decline, but maybe we should look at where the plateau is, so to speak?
Yes, there will certainly be a plateau, and how much it declines is, is dependent on things like charter schools.
Okay.
I have a question. Hey, Robert.
Well, what I was gonna, I was just gonna make a comment. I just want to remind everyone, just kind of our culture, our history, the pattern. As far as long-range planning, um, you know, the past studies are fantastic when it, when it comes to the, the overall numbers. Uh, and we talked about that a little bit in building and planning. And you saw the slide where they're within a, basically a hundred students, uh, in their projections. But what we do here with, we take into account what the community is looking for. You may remember under Dr. Sconzo, we made the change to go to smaller learning environments, smaller schools. Well, we've kind of shifted away from that to, to larger schools. And now we're gonna be faced with a situation, do we, is it more cost-effective, more economical to do additions like what we're doing at Tascasita High School right now? And doing that at, say, a Summer Creek and, and an Umla to compensate for this growth? Or do we utilize the land that we purchased to build another high school? And, you know, that's something that, that we're not gonna make that decision today, but we do have to start having that conversation, uh, o- over the next few years as far as how are we going to, uh, accommodate those students economically in the best way possible? So just, um, that's, that's something that we look at with our, with our community members, with our staffing members, uh, to make the best decision possible for the entire community.
Okay, um, is Stacy or Justin? What you just talked about, Stacy, about, uh, to Martina's question, the plateauing, I mean, do we kind of see that already, looking at your projections for births and kindergarten, kindergarten enrollment over the first five years of the period? It's, you know, it starts, it looks like it's starting to come down and, you know, is it flattening? Because obviously, if you project out those kiddos in ten years, um, you know, they'll be fifteen, they'll be what, sophomores in high school? Or, so you start to think ahead and say, well, we don't have a lot of, the customers aren't growing. Uh, the number of customers aren't growing. Is that, do we have to, how do we factor that in? Because you don't want to go ahead and then have some, some costs because now you have a high school or, you know, even a middle school that's underutilized by a great amount. So how, how do you use that information to help you project? Cause that's what I'm kind of seeing there, if, if we can, you know, believe that's how it's going over the first part.
Yeah, Stacy, you're muted, first of all. Um, I think, um, we are seeing, I'll, I'll answer one, one part of your question. I think Stacy will take the latter half. There is a leveling out occurring. And, but you have to remember, you know, you might be losing students in one part of the district because they're just not being born, but they're still coming in in another part. So, um, i- it's going to take a while to start seeing that, that, that reduction. I think you're gonna, you're going to see that, that plateau of the high school growth in particular by the end of the projection period. You've got to have a place to put those students. So that's going to be your big question. You can, you can assume you'll have some, uh, you may have some decline later on. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure what to tell you because it's so far off. And there's so many unanswered questions. But, um, I, what I can say is I'm not anticipating too many more students than what we're showing in the ten.
Also, I think it's important to remember that when the growth levels off, there, and even when there's no new housing to be constructed, the, um, the reputation of Umla ISD is still great. And it's still a place that people with kids want to send their kids to school. And so those existing homes will, will be regenerating as older families move out, empty nesters move out. And again, because the life cycle of these homes is staggered so much throughout the district, that helps to even out that regeneration. So that would argue that the plateau at the high school would be more of a plateau and less of a decline simply because of the demand for Umla ISD. People want to send their kids to Umla ISD.
Hey, Robert, just to, just to add a little more to your, your, your question, like, a Tascasita High School, uh, based on the numbers that we're seeing, it has already peaked and is kind of starting to plateau. If you look at the projections, it actually starts reducing, uh, uh, in the second half of the decade. But then also, as we're looking at, at growth, the Umla High School project is gonna increase enrollment there from twenty-eight hundred to, I think, thirty-two hundred, uh, as well. So, you know, a lot of that stuff is already happening as far as the plateauing. And then a lot of that planning as far as planning for that growth is happening as well. Cause I, I think, uh, I think Stacy, you said it, that, uh, uh, we don't want to overbuild either and then have to turn around and, and shut things down. But I think Umla is a desirable place to be. So I think we'll get that regeneration, uh, but not a, not a lot of new growth once we're built out. Just another comment.
And I wanted to, I'll piggyback on what Robert just said as well. And, and Dr. Fagan, maybe she can speak to this, um, also. Um, in, in looking at Quest being expanded to six hundred, I believe that, um, when we have applicants to Quest, aren't there lots of students who want to get into Quest and they cannot get in? So expanding from the, the number we're at right now to six hundred will also benefit us. I mean, I don't think there's going to be any shortfall in that area.
That's correct. Uh, every year, Quest has a waitlist of between one hundred and one hundred and fifty students. And so we haven't had the space, uh, to do that. But with their new spot, we're building to accommodate approximately six hundred because we do have the demand for that program. So that will help with some of our, um, our student need space also. The other thing that's a unique dynamic of the moment that we're in is this whole notion of online learning that hasn't been really an option in the past. And so now, uh, as we're moving forward and, and we're going to get a taste of that in the fall to see which students continue online instead of in person, that's a unique dynamic that we haven't had, but it certainly changes the requirement for space. And so we're really looking at all of these things. And I agree with everything that's been said. I think Umla ISD has done a great job of building for plateau, not for peak, using temporary buildings to manage that, uh, some flex zones to manage that so that our community has, um, you know, that heart, that say that's so important to them. And as we continue forward and look at all these different things, uh, we've, we've put the right schools in the right places with the right capacities to manage. The elementary, we're working on the middle school with ten gonna open. Um, and then this high school piece is a, is a question for, for this team and this board to come together because it's not clear-cut. If you had an extra five thousand students, it's clear-cut. Uh, we don't, we won't, we aren't going to have that. And, uh, the good news for Umla ISD is that people move here, they love to be here, they stay here. And then as homes turn over, people, children typically do move in. And so that sustains us, so we won't be that declining district. Um, that's, that's a tough place to be, uh, to be in a declining enrollment district. So I think our plateau will be strong and good, but we certainly don't want to overbuild and have excess capacity because it's expensive. And, um, so these are the things we have to weigh. Uh, and we also have to weigh, you know, Summer Creek doesn't have that Gold House. We have a two-story Gold House addition possibility there. We have the twenty classroom addition we did at AHS that we had, we could put there. All those things are in play, um, that would alleviate.
All those things are in play, um, that would alleviate, uh, or would add a lot of capacity there. Umlb High School's new capacity will be over 3,200. Um, so we have a lot of things in play to help us have breathing room as we're moving forward and really evaluate, uh, the need, uh, of, of what we want to do to accommodate all of our students. But it certainly is a, it's a borderline question. It's, it's not clear cut and I think that there's a lot of merit, uh, to seeing if our students will fit in our current, our current schools.
Yeah, let me, I, the other thing too, we need to keep in mind, because this really is a balancing act. And Stacy mentioned it, that, yeah, even though you reach a plateau and/or Justin might have said it, and we all know it. We're going to have to start rebuilding things and they're expensive. And we see what we're facing because you get to the point where you can't fix, you can't add, you need to knock down. And we were doing that in two places already and we know a third one's coming. And yeah, it's like painting a bridge, you get to the end, you start over again. So it's going to be expensive and, uh, from a capital standpoint, you gotta see what impact it'll have on taxes. I mean, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a real balancing act.
Well, the reason why we went to larger schools, especially with the high schools, we were comfortable with that. It's because of the house idea in that we have these kids in different houses. And that's worked really well for us, especially managing schools like Atascacita that have grown significantly. And to think that we're going to build a school, a high school, the most expensive school you can build for only a couple thousand more kids, I think is insane, especially when we know we're going to plateau. So, um, you know, I've got another year on the board, but, uh, I think would be frankly, looking at these numbers crazy to build another high school. But that's going to be, if we don't deal with it this year, um, I'm sure another board will deal with it. But, um, I, I, it does not make sense to me when we have room at Summer Creek to add. Um, I'm not sure where we'd have room at Umlb, but we would figure something out or rezone. And, uh, we, we would be able to, I think, manage that, uh, once we hit the plateau.
That's exactly the conversation that we've had is that you're talking about a $200 million facility with a huge annual operating budget. You're adding, you know, another marching band, another football team, all that stuff. A high school is the most expensive thing to build and it's the most expensive thing to have. And so, uh, you just add a whole nother layer of complication to everything we do. And it's necessary, it's necessary. But I think there's, there's a good case to be made that, um, if we do some good work at all of our current campuses, we can manage our plateau capacities.
Yeah, with the online learning, but, but Robert Scarfo hit my concern on the head. Because this last go around, we were looking at schools that basically we didn't need to waste money on. We need to knock them down and build new schools. We picked two, but there were a handful of other ones that were borderline. And so we know that we're going to have other schools that are going to need to be rebuilt. That costs money. So are we going to take $200 million for a school that is going to be underutilized in, in 15 years? You know, it doesn't, frankly, it doesn't make sense to me, but again, two cents.
I think we all agree that, uh, you know, a new North Belt, uh, potentially a new Foster, major renovations at Ross Sterling. These are all things that are on the radar, uh, that we're all interested in seeing move forward. And so that is the, I mean, that is the question. We only have so much bond capacity without raising taxes, which we're not going to be interested in doing. And so we have to make difficult choices. And I think that, again, I, I, I think that that's exactly, uh, the analysis that we've done is that there is an ability for us to add on to Summer Creek. Um, Umlb High School's major renovation, Quest's major renovation. Kingwood High School has some capacity. Um, so we have some ability to, to bring all those students into current campuses with some work done. But we are going to need additional bond because Summer Creek's going to have extensive, have to have extensive, um, additions.
Can I ask a question, Robert? In the, the building planning committee, hey, I, I know we got going on at Umlb, but does it make sense now to maybe expand, uh, as opposed to, um, remobilizing, uh, a bill, a construction, uh, two years later? Should we go ahead and, and add capacity now, even if it's not going to be totally used? I, I just wonder if you guys have talked about, since we're, we're in the throes of doing that, uh, should we go farther? We made that mistake at Atascacita initially and built it a little too small, but yeah. Anyway, I just wondered if you guys talked about it.
Yeah, so you've got, uh, you've got the 20 classroom addition plus some, plus CTE additions going on at Atascacita right now. The, uh, Umlb High School expansion is going to go from 2,800 to, um, well, right now it's basically 2,400 because you've got 400 Quest kids there. So it's going to go from 2,400 at Umlb High School to 3,200. Quest will go from 400 to 600. All that is going on right now. Then we've looked at, uh, at, uh, Summer Creek. Uh, we're going to have to work with Generation Park to, to get some of that easement property back. Uh, and, and in theory, take their gold house and build it two-story where Atascacita's gold house is only one story. Uh, but you could also move some of the fields around and add another, uh, what we're doing at Atascacita. So between those projects, the only one that does not, um, I guess on the drawing board right this minute is Summer Creek High School. Those other projects are already either out for bid or we have architects that are doing the design phases. And, um, so what would probably happen, um, going forward is, is depending on where the money comes from, if it comes out of this bond, uh, if there's leftover, if you will, or in another bond referendum, as far as Summer Creek is concerned, we will probably have to utilize portable buildings, uh, uh, you know, not, not next year, of course, but down the road to suffice the, the, uh, uh, the growth temporarily uh, until we're able to, to fund that project. But the rest of those projects are already going.
I understand all that. My question was like on Umlb. So if we're going to 32, it, should we be thinking about, since we're doing it now, should we go to 36 or 3,800 capacity looking ahead to what we're going to need? And that's what I was, have we talked about that in committee and with Nolan and his guys? Um, that should just, just go ahead and expand the project now. Maybe it doesn't make sense if you say you come back later in three years or whatever. And I guess it depends on capacity too. I just was wondering if we gave much thought to looking at these numbers and what they're saying about where Umlb's going. Do you, do you just go ahead and bite the bullet and say, well, 32 is not going to be enough and let's go to 36 to 38? I, I don't know. I haven't been intimately involved in the discussions and with the committee.
Well, two things, two things. Number one, we just got these numbers, uh, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Now, but yeah, and, and number two, uh, uh, PBK is still in the design phase. So based on, based on the budget, uh, and based on, uh, any residual monies out there, uh, we'd like to, we'd like to, um, save some money along the way to go ahead and do the North Belt project. Cause that's a necessity as well. Uh, but, uh, we can certainly look at what would a 3,200? Well, we're looking at a 3,200 student expansion, but what would a 3,600 student expansion look like? And where would it go and how would that fit on that piece of property?
Well, and that's, that's, that would be the answer. I think we have a middle ground option is where we design, uh, with the architects, a two-phase plan, uh, for Umlb. Because if we do, uh, a 36 or whatever the number is, um, we've, we've already added some additional dollars to that project that we've saved in other places. Um, so we would have to, I, as you know, from being on the bond committee, everything was allocated. So where do you get that additional money? That's a, that's a challenge of that scenario. But if we plan for it, then in the next bond, we can do the Summer Creek addition, the phase two of Umlb High School and whatever else that we put in there that are the highest priority projects.
And also I would like to say, you know, since we're getting used to online school, it also may be an opportunity for us to look at formalizing some type of virtual academy. So there may not be as much of a need as parents are, you know, getting used to this type of learning environment for their students. Um, just a thought.
No, it's a really good thought and, um, actually Mike Seal brought it up, uh, in a, in a committee meeting the other day where he said, you know, this is really opening doors and if TEA allows it, um, and they will fund those students and go to a competency-based high school education away from a minute, 75,600 minutes education, then that could be a viable opportunity for Umlb ISD to, to have a virtual, uh, high school. So just never know what a pandemic, a pandemic might give you, but.
And that's correct. And I just want to add what Martina said. I, I think we definitely need to look at that piece, knowing that the state is saying, hey, you know, you need to build upon this piece anyway because we've got those parents out there. And who knows how big that would be.
So I have a question for Justin, uh, that kind of piggybacks on with what they're talking about. Um, in one of your first slides, you showed us that we had a 96.4% retention of students within our boundary with those, the remaining 3.6, uh, going to, you know, privates or charters or something like that. Um, did that number take into account our homeschooled children that live within the boundary? Uh, because I think if we were to go with like a virtual academy or something like that, that actually captures, um, some of those current homeschool children as well. So I'm just kind of curious if that number took that into account.
Yeah, we, we get that question a lot. And the truth is, we, we really, really do not know how many homeschool children are out there. And there are certain states that do know because at the state level, they're required to, to report them. Um, and there are lots of state level requirements, but in Texas, we just don't know. Now, a lot of studies have been done and in general, anywhere from 0.5 to 1.5 of all students are actually homeschooled. It's really not as high as a lot of folks think. But, you know, in, it's, it's different in every area. Um, so you could say maybe one and a half percent are homeschooled.
I think we actually have a significant number of students in our district that are homeschooled. It would be really interesting to see if there was a way to figure that out.
There is a way to figure it out. It's just that in a growing environment as in Umlb, it's, it's really tough. Because, you know, your data you get from the census is already useless the minute it comes out. Um, so if your area isn't growing with new housing, you'd be able to figure that out a little better, uh, from census data. And from then, how many public school, uh, and private school students there are. Um, so unfortunately, it's, it's just a little, little more difficult in areas like yours. So the data that we showed is just public school and private school student estimates.
But that, but that 3.6%, that, does that include, um, maybe teachers who work in another district but live in our district and take their students to that district as well?
Right. That would be, um, in that, uh, nearby district total. So there was a, you know, there's a percentage of students. There's a student percentage in privates and then the nearby district. So, you know, anyone in Aldine who teaches there may send their kid there. Um, and I didn't want to, I had something I was thinking about a second ago before this question. Um, it regards the, the virtual school. You're not the only district thinking about that right now. Just a few hours before this meeting, I, I was meeting with another district in Austin and that very same, uh, topic came up regarding high schools, believe it or not. That they would, you know, instead of building a, a 6A high school, maybe they should be thinking about a subset of the population going virtual. And so I think it's just something that you'll have to think about. Does that answer your questions, by the way?
I believe so.
Okay, I'm, I'm fading out here. It's, I'm almost in pitch darkness.
Okay.
I apologize.
Well, thank you very, very much, Justin and Stacy. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anyone, does anyone have any other question? Okay.
Okay. Well, if you, if you do have questions later on, uh, send your emails to us always.
Yeah. Thank you, Justin, Stacy. Good job.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, not having, uh, is there any other discussion? Uh, if not, uh, we have one other informational item, the monthly, uh, financial services. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, not having any. Do we have any consideration for future board topics? Not having any.
I do have something I'd like us to consider, uh, to have a discussion and, you know, as an agenda item, to talk about, uh, student records and the protection of student records and, and, um, information that is available on those records. I, I believe in, in, um, Ms. Merrick, and tell me if I'm wrong, but that that would come under governance, governance and policy, uh, or to the policy governance, um, just in terms of, uh, what we're doing, how we're doing it.
Okay, all right. So we'll take that under consideration. And, uh, anything else? Not having anything? Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Good seeing everybody.
Good seeing, hey, Bren, it's good to have you back. All right, night, night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bren, I really do like this mute button.
Yeah, I do too. Night, Joe.
Night. Hey, everybody have a good night.
Good night.